You ready for me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney, please report out of closed session.
Thank you. So the Emeryville City Council, the Successor Agency, and the Mesa Board met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda regarding item 5.1.1. An update was provided and direction was given regarding all of the items under 6.1. An update was provided regarding 6.2.1 through 6.2.6. An update was provided regarding item 6.2.7 on a motion by Member Medina with a second by Member Bouters on zero vote, the City Council rejected the claim regarding items 6.2.8, 6.2.9. An update was provided regarding item 6.3.1. An update was provided and direction was given and regarding items 7.1 and 7.1.1 and 7.1.2, an update was provided. And that's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. The time is 6:30 and this meeting is adjourned. And it is still 6:30 and I'm calling to order the City Council Special Study Session. Today's Tuesday, January 19th, and if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to read my little opening speech. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide public comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. Madam City Clerk, do you need to call roll again?
Yes, please. Councilmember Bouters?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. And at this point, I'll look for approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the final agenda.
I'll second. You have a motion from Member Bouters, a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. So that passes unanimously. So we'll move on to ex parte communications. Does anyone have anything to report for this meeting? Nope, nothing for the study session. Okay, so now is the time for a public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items, actually, there's only one item on this meeting, so related to this agenda, should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
So I do have two online cards, however, they relate to the item. So this public comment is meant for items not on the agenda, so.
Got it. All right. So can I just call for the items that are related to the agenda?
I think you'd want the staff presentation first, right?
Right.
Okay. So we've got a three-part staff presentation, so we'll take that public comments after the three items are introduced. But I just want to let my colleagues know that I want you to feel free to ask questions between the three parts of the presentation as well. But then let's save our discussion for the end, I guess. So moving along, we're ready for our staff presentation. So take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sherry, if you could call up our PowerPoint. Mayor and council members, what we have for you tonight, as the mayor said, is a three-part study session. And what we've done is there's a discussion slide at the end of each of the three parts. But what we are here to do tonight is to kick off the budget planning for the next two-year cycle, fiscal years '21 and '22, '21 through '23. Next slide, please, Sherry. The first part will be a review of the updated five-year forecast. The last time we were before you was in September, where we gave you a five-year forecast that was taking into account the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and told you at that time we would be back to you in January with an update based on new information from the fall. Our Finance Director Brad Farmer has that update for you tonight. The second part of his presentation will be to discuss some proposed budget strategies for the next two-year cycle, and we'll be seeking your feedback on those strategies. That is the first part of the presentation. The second part of the presentation is to review the capital improvement program. As you'll recall, the CIP follows along with the two-year budget cycle, and so now is the time to start thinking about what we would like to do in this current constrained environment with our CIP, our capital improvement program. Our Public Works Director Mary Grace Houlihan will be walking you through a couple of slides, reviewing where we are at with current projects, and looking at what could be done in the next two-year cycle. There will be a discussion slide at the conclusion of that. And then finally, this is the time of year to start thinking about your goals and priorities for the next two-year cycle. So the presentation will come back to me at that point. I will review where we're at with your current goals and priorities, and then there will be a slide for discussion of goals and priorities for the next cycle. Next slide, please, Sherry. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Farmer, our Finance Director.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Tonight, we're going to take a look in a short order here. The first two columns are a look back at '18, '19, and '19, '20, and then the final two columns there are the amended budget and the projection that we prepared for you as of last week. As you can see, there was $47.5 million in overall revenue in '18, '19, pretty much more of a regular type of year. Last year, with COVID implementing, we decreased our revenues to $43.6 million, go right across the top line here. And then at the beginning of this year, the amended budget was $38.9 million, anticipating additional slowing from the economy. And the projection that I put together is actually a little bit worse off than that. It's at $33.0 million. It's about $900,000 less than we saw in August. That's mainly due to sales tax and TOT and some business license, because business license and sales tax are kind of interrelated. Obviously, as businesses have less business, they're going to pay less business license upon their revenue than they have. Moving to the second line, you can see that we were pretty much at about $20 million for the last couple of years, went up a little bit, not too much. In the current year, we went up to $22.8, and then I'm projecting it at $22.9, and that's some of the benefit costs that are coming in a little bit higher than what was initially projected. A lot of those changes happened in January. For instance, all medical goes from January to December versus our fiscal year, which is July through June. The operating expenses went from $17.9. It's like we had some good savings the next year, $200,000 savings, and then kind of back towards a normal, what we would expect to be, an increase at $20.4 to start the year. The departments have kind of tightened their belts a little bit, and that looks to be pulling down to about $20.2 million this year. And then the transfers out, you can see where two years ago, we were at $5.3 million, and those drastically got cut for last year. And then that same mode kept going through this year. However, you will see there went from 2.1 at the beginning of the year to 2.4. That's actually a decrease of $300,000, and that's related to additional costs over at the ECDC for operating that center there. So you can see that in relative terms, the expenses have not gone up too awfully much over the last three years, from $43.6 down to $41.3, and then we're back up to that $45.3 and $45.5 million. Unfortunately, most of that is really a result of the reduced revenues versus the expenses really taken in out of control position. And as you can see, two years ago, kind of a normal year, we're adding about $3.8 million to the unassigned capital. Last year's finished off pretty good, adding $2.2 million to it, almost $2.3. And then at the beginning of this year, the initial projection was to be short $6.4 million, as you can see there. And then what I'm projecting because of the reduction in the revenues primarily is that we'll be at $12.4 million this year. At the beginning of this year, council was good enough to take some one-time transfers of $6.3 million and allow those to come back to the general fund to offset the projected expenses. Those are one-time monies. They're not recurring and ongoing. Taking that into the end of the year, you can see where previously you were asked to utilize the $5 million additional. I don't think we're going to need to get into the $5 million that much, but at this point, it looks like we're going to hit the other $4 million. So we're going to be down to about $3.9 million at the end of this year of unassigned general fund balance. With that, I just want to point out, because the next slide kind of topples off of this one, in the 2021 projection, you can see the net change number there is $12.4 million. If we could go to the next slide, please. So here, what he did is the first column, excuse me, is actually a duplication of the last column on the previous slide. The revenue is, excuse me, $33 million, expenses at $45.5, and it's that same $12.4 million. And so what I wanted to do was take that out another four years based upon what we're aware of. So with this, we're really seeing a slowed return to the economy. The things that we don't know is exactly when sales tax is going to kick back in, when the TOT, which is the biggest part of the revenue that dropped, will turn back around. We did lower some of the business license along with the sales tax. So we actually have more of a slow recovery projected in this revenue line going from 2021 all the way to 2425. Excuse me. On the salaries and benefits, you can see that it goes from $22.9 million projected this year to $25.9 million all the way over in 2425. Excuse me. The big factor on this line here is going to be two things. One is past '21, '22. The only projected pullers that we have in that line item are going to be just the negotiated amounts that are currently there. There is nothing in there for pullers from '22, '23 onward. The other item that I wanted to really point out with this is that in this line item is the city's UAL, or unfunded actuarial liability, and that is going up, and that accounts for majority of the increase from '21 through '25. Not only is the normal cost going up, but also the unfunded liability. And just as a little reminder, when CalPERS doesn't meet its projected income, they're expecting a 7% return. Last one I saw was 4%, which means that it's a shortfall. So that will be adding to our upcoming UAL payments for the next few years. So I do expect that those line items on that are buried into the salary and benefits will continue to increase over the next few years. The operating expenses here, one of the big things that's increasing that line is the old fire department that the city used to have. We have an unfunded liability in there also, and that is also increasing over time. The transfers out, you can see that we pretty much tried to keep those even at about that $2.4 million range across the board. One thing I did forget to mention is these revenues have the same factor that's baked into the current year, where we moved some of the reserve policies around, where we use 50% for the transfer tax thing with general fund. So all the existing policies that we had and that you guys approved in this June, I went ahead and maintained those, carrying that through until we start to see a recovery on the overall revenues for the city. So what that does is it takes us down to kind of the bottom line, where you can see for this year, we're at $12.4 million, which basically has been resolved through council action already. In the next two years, where we're at $14 million and $14.8 million are really the crux of what we need to look at for the budget cycle that we're currently going to be entering. The next two years are, they're educated guests. They're all based upon not only my education, but other departments, and we're using consultants to provide us sufficient information on TOT and sales tax and franchise tax. So I think that this is a really good, honest look at the numbers of where we stand right now. Unfortunately, I don't know when the economy is going to recover. So at this point, I'm not really going to look at those outer years, because I'm hoping that, you know, within a year, we'll get the virus inoculations in, and people will start to get a little bit more comfortable moving back into the economy and moving around as we did even a couple of years ago. If we could go to the next slide, please. So what I wanted to do was I wanted to take a look at a couple of budgeting strategies for the next two years. So the projected deficit for next year is the $14 million. We start at the top, and then the following year, $14.8 million. So as potential strategies for your consideration that we'll also be taking to the Budget Governance Committee and Budget Advisory Committee is the following. There was a recent commercial transfer tax that should come in at about $1 million. I would ask that that $1 million be allocated towards the next year. That is already on top of the $1 million that we have allocated and preprogrammed into our normal budget. So that's kind of like a one-off situation. Maintaining the vacancies that are sitting wide should save about $1 million in the next two years each year. Operating expense reductions, these are not specifically identified yet, but more a placeholder for where we need to look at potentially some of the contracts that we have. Reducing interfund transfers, that's part of what I talked about before, maintaining certain policies that we, that the council authorized in June, and not moving money into some of the reserves that we have in the past at this point. And then using the economic reserves, I'm suggesting that we potentially use $3 million. I do not, I'm not fond of using that reserve at great lengths. I think we have to be very frugal with how we utilize that, because we want to make sure that we're only utilizing it when necessary and not completely limiting reserves right there. If we finish this year at that $3.9 million, I would ask that that be allowed to be used for next years to kind of plug part of the hole. And then we do have a 115 plan for CalPERS. It's got a $10 million balance. This is something that we could utilize to use for current costs as well as for the long term. Given the economic outlook right now, I would suggest that we use $1 million of that for the next two years, and hopefully the economy will start to pick up at that point. So what that does is for next fiscal year, it still leaves us with a whole of $2.28 million, and then followed the following year by eight with $8.5 million. Those are large numbers that, you know, we're going to have to sharpen the pencils a bit hard on to figure out what to do. But these are some basic strategies that I wanted to lay forward for you, at least to kind of kick off the budget process. And then the last slide that I have for you is we told council we would bring back, next slide, please, we would bring back measure F funding for your consideration. At this point, this is just informational. Based upon what I see in collections and from our sales and use tax, I expect that we'll get about $1.5 million for this year, remembering sales tax always comes in every year. Right now, we have $650,000 so far this year. I project that it probably should go to about $1.8 and $2 million for the next couple of years. And then I just wanted to remind you of the six eligible expenses that were on the ballot measure, and they are listed right there in front of you. I'm going to stop talking for a minute and see if anybody has any questions or corrections, or Christine, if you'd like to.
Sherry, if you could just move us to the next slide, which are discussion suggestions for the City Council, Madam Mayor. We're happy to answer any questions.
Good. Let's start with clarifying questions from, and I can't see all of my colleagues. So just, oh, there we go. Thank you.
We'll go back to the full screen at each of the discussion slides.
Great. So Member Donahue can kick it off.
Is the sale of the public market that million-dollar item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, clarifying questions? I have a question. Brad, where are we at as in terms of percentage funded of our unfunded liabilities? What's our status?
Sure. Give me one second. I have that.
And I know, I understand from what you explained to us, that it's a moving target, and it's evolving.
One second. I have it. Here, I just kind of pull it up.
While you're doing that, I want to ask Sherry if the public comments that she's received are pertaining to the five-year forecast or the budget, because if so, this might be an appropriate time for you to read those into the record.
The one question that I have, I was wrong before. I only have one question, and it has to do with the budget overall, revenue expenditure. It's from Mira Dusai.
I think this would be a good time to hear her comment.
Okay.
May I ask, Madam Mayor, as a point of order, if the member who wrote the comment in is available, are we going to offer them the opportunity to speak their comment first as opposed to Sherry doing it in case they wish to amend it or make their own words?
I would be pleased to do that, and I apologize. I need to read my little speech. Is that right, Sherry? Or would my first speech condition enough to cover us for the whole meeting?
Yeah, this is the short version, right? Just the part about public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I believe Mira did want me to read it, but I've allowed her to talk, so she can confirm that.
Okay, so Mira, just give me a second. I'm going to just read this paragraph, and then either Sherry or you, either way is fine, can read your public comment for three minutes. Now's the time for public comment. Anyone wishing to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. So Sherry, if you're prepared to read that, go ahead, unless Maru would like to do that herself.
Mira, shall I go? Well, she's not talking, so I'm going to go.
Okay.
Dear Mayor Martinez and council members, to say that this two-year budget cycle occurs under unprecedented circumstances is an understatement. We, as a nation, as a state, and as a city, are facing triple crises in the forms of pandemic-induced economic crisis, a crisis of racial reckoning, and a climate change crisis. This is the background and context within which the council will make some important decisions. Your decisions on this budget will reflect your values, your creativity, and your leadership. It is not an envious task. On the revenue side, the city manager and staff have identified several one-time strategies. SEIU endorses these proposals and asks that you adopt them. If there are additional property sales during the budget process and the budget period that generate one-time transfer taxes, then those two must be used for filling the budget deficit. Another low-hanging fruit is funds from Measure F that the city will receive. We urge you to assign all Measure F funds as revenue for meeting the ECDC expenditures for the 2021-23 budget, as well as for the five-year budget forecast. Given the extent of budget shortfalls that we are facing, it makes little sense to use Measure F funding for any of the other possible items that involve the hiring of additional police officers, firefighters, engineers, and a code enforcement officer. On the expenditure side, we note that the salaries included 2.75% wage increase, cost of living adjustment for police officers, and a 2.0% for department heads and managers as part of EPOA and camp contracts respectively for the year 2021 to 2022. Similar wage adjustments have not been accounted for the majority of the city's workforce that provide essential services. This is because, as you're aware, SEIU's contract ends in June 2021. This is an untenable situation that will require creativity, imagination, and persuasion to address. For this two-year budget, it is inevitable that we will need to make a robust use of the city's reserves. If a global pandemic felt acutely in California with limited federal support does not qualify for using reserves to balance the budget, then SEIU is not sure what else can. We are fully cognizant that reliance on reserves to meet city expenditures is not what any council wants to do. We also understand and applaud that the council has already started looking at other revenue streams, such as setting up lighting and landscape district. Prior efforts such as a SOTA tax and a surcharge on transportation networking companies may be appropriate for reconsideration. We would also suggest considering a utility tax, as there has been a tremendous increase in research and development proposals, with some entitled in the past year and others that are currently under the entitlement process. This reveals a significant demand and a possible new focus for Emeryville as we find our retail spaces reimagined. SEIU urges that you give direction to the city manager that prepares Emeryville for the next five years while sustaining us for the next two. Sincerely, Mira Dusai, SEIU, Emeryville Chapter President.
Great. Thank you for those comments. So I believe we can, do we need to pull up that slide for the discussion items?
Madam Mayor, basically, it's two questions. One is your feedback on the strategies that we proposed, and then if you have any additional ideas for strategies that you'd like us to research, we'd like to hear that.
Okay. Brad, go ahead.
So yes, I'm sorry. You asked me about the percentage funded. So the average funded is 83% for everything except for the old fire system, which is actually at 64%. Anything over 80% is considered to be well-funded, and I think that we're in really good shape. That does not account for the 115 plan that is just that was with CalPERS in 2019. They're always near behind.
Okay. Thank you for that information, Brad. So in terms of the one-time strategies that staff is proposing, are we in general agreement that we should pursue those strategies? And that is a question from staff. So does anyone want to kick it off? Member Medina?
I support the use of these strategies. I think they're prudent. I think they're taking a very careful look at how to draw down from our reserves in a responsible way, because we don't know how long this is going to go on for.
Thank you. Member Donahue?
I echo what Councilmember Medina just said.
Any other comments from Member Pats or Member Bouters?
I'll just concur with my colleagues.
And I will as well. This is like, this is, these issues are going to get a deep dive in our committees. So I look forward to discussing this further with my colleagues there and hearing from our Budget Advisory Committee, excuse me. So I think we're all in agreement, Madam City Manager, that these are all strategies that we do want to pursue. And thank you for bringing them forward, Brad and Christine. And thank you for bringing them forward, Brad and Christine.
Thank you.
So anything additionally you'd like us to research, the council as a whole, um, that we would, uh, bring to the Budget and Governance Committee? We'll certainly be having, as you said, an in-depth discussion with the committee, but if there's anything that is top of mind for any of the council members right now, we'd love to hear it.
Well, right, right off the top of my mind, Christine, I, um, uh, years ago, I brought up a soda tax and it was not the right time for the council. Um, I did not want to hear about it, but I think this might be a really good time, um, and, uh, to, to talk about a soda tax. It was, it's something that's been passed all around us, um, in many other communities. So, uh, you know, we'd have a, a lot of templates, um, to look at if we were to consider, uh, a soda tax. I don't think it would be a huge revenue, um, driver, but it would be revenue, uh, member Bouters?
Legislative constraints on that at this point, but we can look into it.
Okay.
I would like to, um, I, I would echo Mayor Martinez a, at a high level and say, um, I think the Budget and Governance Committee should have, uh, revenue streams referred to the Budget and Governance Committee with direction from council today. To discuss those, I would like to discuss a general tax, um, and the availability of, or the opportunity to raise, um, more money with a general tax.
I support that, uh, member Medina?
Yeah, um, I spent some time looking over, um, how much venture capital funding our city attracts. It's actually really remarkable, we outperform Berkeley, um, in terms of venture capital and IPO funding, um, just Emeryville alone. And we're pretty close to what Oakland holds then, we have a real strength within venture happily funded businesses. Um, and we have several on-track IPO. So I'd like to explore, um, how any revenue sources that we can look at from where our economic strength is right now, which is not with retail. It's really with fire tech and, um, venture capital funded businesses. And so that can look at like the lighting assessment district, but also the city of Long Beach has a public-private partnership where they get a percentage of equity in exchange for providing some accelerator space. Um, and so I think that has yielded significant funding for the city, um, already, I'd like to explore some of these kind of options.
Good, uh, member Donahue?
Uh, I assume that, Brad, your figures, we're assuming our TOT tax or hotel tax, excuse me, from occupancy of our hotels is gonna be about the same going forward, that's what the numbers I looked at and on your chart, is that correct?
So for next year, I have them basically at the same as this year's projection, and then they go up about five hundred thousand a year. Cause I just don't know when the recovery is gonna be there and then, but they're going towards a virtual lifestyle. Um, you know, will it ever get back to where it was? I mean, I think it will, I just think it's gonna take a few years, we're not gonna see people out and start traveling, um, just because, you know, a lot of people get the vaccine, I think it's gonna take a little better time. So in a stepped process there. Really consistent with one of the consultants', um, viewpoints. Um, and it's actually another driving factor that allowed me to utilize that kind of a step process.
I, I have a suggestion, uh, in relation to that revenue source, since we're so down in that category. And since our city has been seeing our hotels occupied as maybe overflow from conferences from San Francisco, business travel, but not the tourist trade typically. That we should consider investing a little bit in making our city more tourist-friendly in various ways, if we can. And maybe, uh, getting our hotels to also include a greater percentage of tourists somehow, that we should strategize about that. Maybe our Economic Development Committee that I'm serving on could figure out some ways that, you know, for a minor investment from our city, we might really more than pay for that with increased hotel occupancy tax.
Right, uh, member Pats, do you have any comments that you want to share?
No, I just, uh, I'll just echo what my colleagues have said, I, I really believe we should look into the lighting district, um, at all. And I think the utility tax is a reasonable thing, but I trust the Budget and Governance Committee is gonna look at all of those revenue sources and really look at staff availability, um, which is my big thing, is that we've got to make sure that they are actually running revenue generators and not just things that, uh, are out there, so, yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Great, so what it sounds like I'm hearing from, um, everyone is that we should refer, uh, revenue generation to, uh, budget and governance and budget advisory committee, and then if folks are comfortable with, um, send, giving EDAC the humongous task of, um, bringing tourism to Emeryville, I am happy to send that their way.
I would clarify one thing, Madam Mayor, I would not recommend we send this to Budget Advisory Committee at this time. Um, that, that should be the purview of the Budget Governance Committee. And after we've brought this back to our colleagues for further discussion, if we would like refinement, I think that's okay, but I would not table this for them at this point.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, so staff has direction on this item, so that can move us over to the CIP presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Sherry, if we could return to slide eight of the presentation. So just to bring, uh, us back to focus, um, we are embarking, would, would be embarking on the next round of our capital improvement program. So what I've asked our Public Works Director, Mary Grace Houlihan, to do this evening is give you a very, and I, being cognizant of where we at, or at in time, a very, a brief overview of where we are at with the funded projects that are underway. And then some ideas about projects in the CIP that are funded already that could be undertaken in a, in a focused approach in the next two-year cycle. So, Sherry, can we get, there we go, slide eight, and then Mary Grace, you could just take it away?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, I'm going to just give the highlights here, as you're aware of most of these projects. And, but currently, right now, what we have in our capital improvement program, we have a very robust amount of projects that we have underway. So, um, our funded projects, uh, currently underway and on, on their way to completion. Of course, our South Bay Front Bridge in Horton Landing Park, uh, scheduled for fall of this year for opening. We have the rail safety quiet zone projects, which, uh, that will be initiated this year, uh, that will complete somewhere around twenty twenty-three mid-year. Um, we have Davenport Park, which we anticipate going to bid here in the next, uh, month or two and in construction and complete for, uh, use this summer. Um, San Pablo Mid-Block Crossing is, uh, already awarded and in, in the contracting phase. We should be complete with that, uh, late summer of this year. Um, Point Emory Shoreline Protection, we will be, uh, completed by fall of this year. Um, and our idea grant, uh, had signal, a modernization project. Um, we have equipment already being installed, um, and we'll see it coming on in phases over the next year or so. Um, and then the Art Center also underway, and Christine, I don't have my case. Um, Sherry, next slide, please. Um, okay, uh, I, projects that, uh, can be done in this next two-year cycle. Uh, we have some infrastructure needs of our facilities, so, uh, City Hall HVAC system, and that would be replacing with a, uh, energy efficient and electric system. And we would be looking to have that hopefully completed end of this year, beginning of next. Um, Temescal Creek Park, looking at some safety and reliability improvements, falls zone material, that type of thing. And our city sewer and stormwater cleaning and inspection, these are, uh, in part regulatory requirements that we need to complete. And we also have some assessment and, uh, preliminary engineering of, uh, our main sewer lines that needs to be, uh, initiated and prepped for construction. Uh, Marina Lighting and dredging, we are getting to the point of needing to initiate our dredging for the Marina area again. So we'll be engaging, uh, our, uh, partners at the marinas for working on this effort. And the Marina Lighting Project has been in design and we should be in construction, hopefully, in this next summer. Um, large trash separator, this is associated with our stormwater permit and our requirement for, um, trash capture. And we've been having some successful discussions with, uh, Caltrans regarding funding of this, and we are looking to get this underway and hopefully in construction by summer of twenty twenty-two. Um, additional maintenance efforts for Forty-Eighth Street Bridge railing and repair. Uh, and, um, those are already under design, as well as Lumix street pole painting and LED. And then our annual paving project, of which we are looking to get underway of design and hopefully have, uh, in construction by late summer of this year. Next slide, please. So, right now, um, our questions, oh, I'm sorry, one, two other projects that are pending funding, uh, apps going in or in place for, uh, grants, our Forty-Eighth Street redesign. And, uh, on the Village Greens Project, the next phase of the Doyle Street Project, which that will be going in or, uh, pending council's, um, uh, direction tonight for ACTC grant opportunity. Next slide, please. So, right now, we are looking for your feedback on basically continuing with projects that are currently listed on our CIP and, uh, having more of a focused effort for our CIP program for this next two-year cycle.
Thank you, Mary Grace, and I just wanted to check in with, um, the city clerk to see if anyone has, uh, submitted any public comments on the CIP.
No, I have no comments at this time.
Thank you, and I don't see anyone with their hands raised, but I will just let folks know that if you're attending the meeting, you can go ahead and use your raise hand, um, feature, or if you're, uh, attending by phone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand and, um, and I will acknowledge you, but I don't see anyone at the moment. So, right now, we are, um, tasked with giving feedback on a very targeted CIP, um, for the next two years. And I'll bring it back to my colleagues for discussions, or anyone who wants to jump in? If no one has nothing, oh, go ahead, member Bouters.
Could we go back to the slides real quick, just so I could, um, see a couple, the, the first two slides in this section? Sorry. And thank you for the super succinct presentation, Mary Grace.
Tell me when to.
Uh, where, I guess maybe I'm, think, what's the, how, is this, is this the first slide from this section?
Page eight was.
Was eight was the first slide, sorry, the numbers threw me off, that's why I'm confused. Okay, um. Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to ask, uh, and then can you go to the next slide real quick? Thank you. I just wanted to ask, um, in thinking about the, the feasibility of some of these things, I know, um, you know, the Budget Committee has just looked at what's available. We've obviously, you know, one of the things that's on the table for the council to consider that I, you know, the Finance Director and the City Manager have recommended is the, um, commercial transfer tax money that goes over the two million dollar, um, you know, kind of like the, the one million dollars a year that we budget to put into certain things. We kind of have a policy that goes above that, that says we split it between unfunded liabilities and additional capital improvement. And we haven't made any decisions, obviously, but we're obviously talking about, um, a couple of things that have links tonight. One of those is that the, the commercial transfer tax money, um, is potentially for some period of time going forward, going to be used to help shore up and fill budget holes, so we don't have, um, staffing and services-related issues. And so when we think about that, like, the, the staff are doing this proposed narrow focus, I think, to the CIP projects with the goal of what can we deliver that's in the queue that has some funding now. And what I, what I'm wondering is, um, looking at that list, and I'll, I'll look to Mary Grace or Christine for some feedback here. Um, but we, we have, when I, when I reviewed the CIP, we, we have money for, um, the Temescal Creek Park. And I'm very sensitive to Councilmember Pats's, um, advocacy for us to get new lighting and some new turf stuff there. Um, but we all, we have this outstanding issue for a bathroom. Um, and my understanding is that we are gonna need a significant amount of, um, additional funding or engineering assistance to make that part of the project, uh, feasible. And so what I'm just wondering is, given that we're gonna have this limited scope of things to do, does it make sense to keep the Temescal Creek, um, CIP item in place, but with the money we have there, um, actually do playground upgrades to the other playgrounds we have, because we have been getting complaints about, um, the surface material coming up, um, the age, the age of some of the equipment and ground material, and I'm just wondering if there's value in having an additional CIP item that's just like playground maintenance and that we borrow money essentially from that fund to complete Davenport Park, to do the upgrade at the, the mini tot lot. Um, i- if people are even interested in that discussion or not, just as something we can take off a list and, and, and clean out of the CIP. Um, recognizing that we don't have enough money right now for Temco, and it's not gonna be funded by the city itself, so we're gonna need to apply for other grant money to do that. And I would, I, and I just, that's just my question, and I defer a lot, a lot to Councilmember Pats on this, but I, just as a suggestion of something we can do to put money to use now during COVID, while we have a chance to do it.
Can I, um, allow the city manager to please respond before you?
If I, yeah, if I could just add, there, we actually do need to do some playground improvements at Temescal Creek Park. That is something that we would like to be able to focus on. Um, there are, and, and Mary Grace could, could give you the detail on that, but it is true, yes, there are additional playground improvements that are needed at the other parks that are not currently funded, but I don't want to overlook that there are playground and infrastructure improvements around the playground at Temescal Creek Park that we would want to make sure we get done. Mary Grace, do you have additional detail on that?
Yes, uh, there are safety and reliability improvements at a few different parks, including Temescal Creek that I think we need to address before they become, uh, a, and a situation where we may have to close infrastructure. Um, playgrounds, fallment, falls zone material has certain requirements, as does the, um, play equipment. And, um, you know, we are working on the inspection and assessment of those right now, but, but we do know we have a need at a few of the parks to address some of that resurfacing and deal with, um, some replacement pieces of some of the, uh, play equipment. So applying these dollars to there would help keep our parks open and available for the public for this period of time. Um, and it, from an asset infrastructure point, I, I would recommend that.
But just to clarify, that includes Temescal Creek Park, that's what we?
Definitely, yes, yes.
So that's, thank you, Madam Mayor, we just.
Thank you, uh, member Donahue, you have some comments?
Well, I just wanted to support what John is saying, that, that keeping what we have functioning uh, is primary the next two years, and the capital improvement monies for the new restrooms for Temescal Creek. There's just, it seems like we should hold off on that in preference for keeping all of our parks open and happening and also for getting Davenport Park finally built.
Uh, member Pats, did you want to respond or add any thoughts?
Um, while I appreciate the, the sentiment, I'm still stuck that we've been waiting at least four years for a bathroom at this park. Um, it really is shocking to me that we have a public park without a restroom. Uh, you know, it, I know there's some engineering challenges with it, and I hear you, and I think we need to be very responsible for, for funds. Um, but, and, and this does not to the current city manager nor the current Public Works Director. But I feel like people have been dragging their feet, because it is not the easiest place to put in a bathroom, but that's actually by design of the park. Uh, really was put up with a lot of barriers for, uh, people to use, it was kind of hidden. Entrances were strategically placed, and I'm still trying to correct that. Entrances were strategically placed, and I'm still trying to correct that error, because people who use the park need a public restroom. I think if nothing else, we've learned that sanitation is critical in this day and age. And so, while I hear we want to repair the other parks, I don't think that should be deprioritized, but we have a park with, you know, I mean, I can imagine what would happen if the, the, the dog park there didn't have pickup bags for dog waste, and yet we are perfectly fine with people not having a method. So, it, it's just one of those things. We're sending the wrong message when we deprioritize sanitation. So, you know, I'm, it's not a hill I'm going to die on and kick my feet and scream, but I just, it really saddens me that it's taken, because I think the, the fight actually started before I was on council to get this done. I think the mayor had talked about it prior to that even. And I don't, I just, I just can't remember it, because I'm old.
And my children are now 100 years old, and it was back when they were toddlers, and we needed that restroom. But, Member Medina, did I see your hands raised?
No, but I, I agree with Member Pat's. I think that public restrooms are of extreme importance and places to go when we are, so many of our units in Emeryville don't have outdoor space. And I have never seen our parks better utilized than I have during COVID, which means we have honestly more people there than ever. I passed through a hall yesterday, and it was the place to be. I, I agree with Councilmember Pat's, that adding sanitation there is a top priority and keeping that a usable space and a clean space.
Yeah, I, I'm going to have to agree with Member Pat's and Member Medina. I was just actually at that park yesterday with my children, who are much too big to be on swings, but are still going to swings. And at, af- after sunset, there were quite a few families at that park using it, just until there was the last light in the sky. And when we briefly had to shut down the park for COVID-19, folks were really wondering when it was going to open, and as soon as it did, they, they all came running back. I do, you know, it's, it's difficult, because we do need to maintain all of our other parks, but I did note that we're due for a turf replacement at Temescal Creek Park as well. So I'm loathe to move that money around specifically. So...
Can I ask a question then, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I mean, I, I hear the majority of council not wanting to make a change. So, given that I tried to put in the lightest terms possible, we face an extremely dire financial situation. I think people hear it, hear it, but I, I can't, I can't convey enough. We will not have any new CIP money for possibly four or five years. And so, the ability to do the project at Temescal Creek Park is not likely to happen in the next four or five years, and the money will sit there. And what I'm, I'm asking is, where will we come up with the money to make the existing parks and playgrounds safe in the interim, knowing that we will most certainly have the use that everyone's talking about at those places in the meantime? And we won't have a new source of money for. I just, and maybe people don't want to answer that today, but I just brought it as a suggestion of a way to try to increase the efficacy and safety of the parks in the meantime. Again, as I said, I am not interested in removing this as a CIP item. I'm just looking at the fungibility of the bottom line of the money and what's the deficit and what's available. And so I just put it out there is that we're, we have to be creative about the pots of money we have to deliver things that are going to come online in the next couple of years. So, I heard the council, but I just ask people to think about that.
Member Donahue?
Here's where I think we just need to be a little creative, like pumping poop uphill for that Temescal site is expensive. Porta potties, we could rent, it could get us through. You know, I, I just think that, you know, we can do something like that that will get us through.
I think hand washing stations makes a lot of sense as well. They're being added to many schools, like on the play yard, so that kids, kids have more opportunities to keep their hands clean. I'm not opposed to, you know, creative solutions that address everyone's needs.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, Madam Mayor, if I may, I walked the park a couple of years ago with our previous Public Works Director to look at all of those engineering issues. And while there are some challenges there, they were not insurmountable, and I hear you about the pumping and the challenges of it, but I'm still stuck with the, it's been resisted more so than looking for a solution. And I'm willing to walk it again with the current Public Works Director when that is reasonable. You know, like I said, this, I, I hear you, I hear you, Member Bouters. I'm right there with you in, in the panic mode, but I feel like there are options, they're not... When things aren't prioritized, it's very easy to find the challenges. And when things are prioritized, it's very, people are more motivated to find solutions. And that's where I'll leave it.
Member Medina?
I'd say this, while I have a strong preference towards providing bathroom facilities at that place, I, I, Member Bouters' point about having funds potentially languish is well-heard. And I would say that perhaps this is a night that we can revisit, but I would not want, I would not want to have CIP funds go unspent, if perhaps we can make, give some policy direction there. That if we are unable and expend a timeframe to have this project underway with the funding we have available, then we use those funds for existing parks.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think we've heard the council's feedback, and what I am not hearing, and I just want to clarify, is objection, or strong objection, to the notion of a focused CIP that really focuses on the funded projects that we have in the CIP and, and really get those done in the next two-year cycle as much as possible with, with staffing, and not add either funding or new projects.
That, that is what I'm hearing, as well as that, is everyone in, in agreement. Yes. Yes, Madam City Manager, we're all in agreement that we should maintain a focus on these funded projects.
Thank you. So, Sheri, if you could just bring us back. I will, Madam Mayor, very briefly go through, and again, this is kicking off, so a slide 12, if you could get us to, thank you. So, in January of 2019, you all had a robust discussion of your goals and priorities and identified, I believe, 11, I may have counted wrong. The staff report that we provided you gave you a very summary update of those. And I'm pleased to say, thanks to your focus and, and the staff's really amazing good work, all of these made progress in one way, shape, or form. So, I won't go through these, we just did most of them, but just the last one on this slide is those parking meters are getting installed in the next couple of weeks. So I know that's been a long time coming. But all of these on this slide made progress. Next slide, Sheri. Again, you heard an update on the quiet zones. You know what happened with Measure F, you heard that earlier. You approved a grant on library in December. We have been working with our bargaining units and trying to support staff through pandemic. The final item there, building a code enforcement program, is really pending a funding, funding decision. As we told you earlier in the budget presentation, code enforcement is an eligible, eligible Measure F or a sales tax expense, but that is a future discussion item for the council. So now is the time of year for you to kick off that conversation. And next slide, Sheri, please. So, in terms of opportunities and constraints, as we've discussed this evening with you, you have a number of major projects underway that need to be completed. We are competitive for grant funds for future projects. And however, more importantly, we have very significant revenue shortfalls that are going to drive a lot of our collective decision-making in the next couple of years. We are proposing to freeze staff positions as they become vacant. And at the same time, we have significant private development that is requiring a lot of staff attention. And that would be coming forward. Transportation Committee, I think, is going to get some more information about the number of projects, private development in the public right away. So, private development that is doing significant public improvements for this community, but that requires significant staff attention, and we just didn't want to lose that point. So with that, I will stop talking. This is an opportunity for you to start your conversation about goals and priorities. Or if you would like to reschedule that for another time, we're happy to do that for the council as well. Just take your lead on that, Madam Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Are folks ready to discuss our goals and priorities tonight? Let's try. Member Bouters?
I, I, I want to thank the city staff and the council for being so focused in, unlike a neighboring city that we're in anonymous that has like a 400 list, goal list that never gets done. It's nice to be in the city. I can cover your smile, that's okay. It's nice to be in a city where we, we have a focused list and staff are really supportive of getting those deliverables done. We turn stuff over relatively quickly, and I'm very grateful for that. So when I look at this list, I'm, I, I think they should all stay there until they're completed, and a lot of them will be completed in the next 18 months, I think. So that's great. I do think there, I, I will table the discussion on the Code Enforcement Officer, which I have a lot of thoughts on for that appropriate next meeting. But I, I would say there is one item I think we need to add to this list, which is developing a, developing a strategy for budget stability, not something we had, you know, asked for a year ago at this time. None of us were having to think this would be something that we would be discussing today. But that, it can be, it can be narrowed at a future discussion, but it could include revenue generating issues. It could, it could, you know, include changes to practices or policies. But I think when you look at this list, a lot of these things here are the compilation of all those standing committees we sit on. Community Services is here. I see Transportation on here. I see, you know, public safety stuff on here. So there's, there's things that we all do, and Budget, Budget Committee has got a really significant set of things to address in the next year or two, which then is all of us addressing this. And it's the staff and the city and the residents here as well. So I think stabilizing the city budget with revenue and policy, a real sincere look at our policy and expenditure practices, I think is going to be a goal that we should have as a priority for this year.
Thank you. And, you know, I failed to ask Sheri to check in to see if there were any public comments submitted in relation to our priorities.
There are none.
Thank you. And if anyone's listening in, if they're, you're attending on Zoom, go ahead and raise your hand. If you are calling in, use the star nine buttons to raise your hand. I'll just give it a second, and I don't see anyone doing so. So bringing it back for more discussion. I myself agree that we should just maintain a narrow focus and, and complete all of these great priorities. The one thing I'm wondering, and this is just a thought, and folks can push back on this if you wish, but I know that we're going to be expecting some sort of economic relief from our federal government. And we've seen from the first version of our governor's budget that he, he does want to make an investment, at least in, in electric vehicles. And I'm curious, we don't know yet if that includes fleets, if we are positioned to be competitive in getting funds for fleet electrification. I know that there are cities that are piloting electric vehicles for their police forces, like the NYPD. We are very small, flat cities, so if a ton of money were suddenly made available that we could invest in local jobs and improve our infrastructure at the same time, I just want to be prepared to do that. That's the only thing I can think that I'd want to add as a priority and only, only with a caveat that if, if there were, if we would be able to pay for it with those types of investments. But otherwise, I think that our, our priorities remain very strong from last year. Any other comments from my colleagues?
I, I would support having something that supported transitioning to, I don't know how you'd capture it, but something sustainable, if it's a sustainability suggestion. And I would just note that the Bay Area Quality Management District actually manages a fund that public agencies can tap into to either do the development of electrification infrastructure, and in some cases with match money allows you to turn over portions of a fleet. So if that's something the city wants to adopt and actually put through Sustainability Committee as a, as a proposal or an idea, I know that I would be happy to share with staff. I'm sure some of Nancy and other folks know this already, but information about that. So if the city wants to develop a strategy for electrifying city vehicles before we do the next turnover, I think that's a totally possible thing.
Yeah, I think with the, the state goals to get our emissions down as far, well, just to let you guys know, with the East Bay Community Energy, the paperwork that we need to submit to the state, we are going for 100% renewable by 2030. So, that requires a lot of investment from that agency into electrification infrastructure. So, I, I just, I see it coming at us from all directions, and I see that as a source of investment in a time when we don't see a lot of sources of revenue. So it could be a win-win situation if we're, if we're in the right position to accept those kinds of funds. So I get, I think that would be great if it went to sustainability. That doesn't need to be a priority that we're putting on this list right now, but it could just be a referral that could end up as one of our priorities. Member Medina?
To that point, I believe of sustainability, we've already had a presentation from our Public Works Director about that department's plans to electrify their fleet and quite a robust description of the hauling capacity of various electric trucks. So, yeah, I don't think that's too big of a reach from where we're already on track.
Then, Madam City Manager, how would we best track all of the funding opportunities for this type of change? Because it's, it, there are just so many different pots I foresee becoming available.
Yeah, I think, I think adding it to your priorities, you know, a, a priority that would be to seek funds for fleet electrification, there would be a group of us. I mean, we would obviously engage Townsend. They are very good about keeping track of grant opportunities, but we also have members of, of this body who sit on important regional boards to help us.
Right.
And then the staff and Public Works are working on some of this already. And then I think EDAC could also play a role as well. So I think there's a variety of different arms of the agent, of the organization that would be engaged.
I think this, this is absolutely appropriate to have a priority to be seeking funds and opportunities that aren't going to cost us money, but get us investments.
I've always said the best money to spend is other people's.
Yes, 100%. Member Pat's, a member, oh, Member Medina, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, sorry. This is almost pedantic of me. I, I do, in terms of our priorities, and in terms of like looking at the Green New Deal and Gavin Newsom's proposed budget, there is a lot of attention and lip service being paid to electrification of vehicles nationally, regionally, locally. And that is not always the best bang for the buck in terms of sustainability and infrastructural investment. So while I am completely supportive of electrifying vehicles, I would ask that we broaden that language towards providing more sustainable infrastructure, so that we don't preclude other options that are non-motor vehicle.
You're absolutely right, and I've already heard it from numtut Twitter, so...
Twitter, I'm sorry, I know. I'm terrible about electric cars thing.
You're, you're 100% correct. I'm just looking at where the dollars are, where, where, I'm just listening to the politicians at the federal and state level and, and their willingness to spend money. And what we need to do is get down into the details of their budgets, and absolutely, we should be working on infrastructure that is, that emphasizes public transportation and bikes and walking, all of that. We certainly should not ignore those. I'm just, I just want to take advantage of the money that, you know, when, when, when this happens, I want to catch that.
I just, I just, I had this vision, as soon as I knew, as soon as Sheri was around, I knew she was going to say. And I just had this vision of her proposing that the Public Works staff, like, have electric bikes that have carriages with all their tools in them going down our streets. So I, I had this vision for a moment. But I do want to say that there, the California Air Resources Board, which also provides, has funding already. It's going to be the recipient of Governor Newsom's proposal, because they manage and distribute money to the regional boards for the electric car, electric car stuff, something that the local air dealerships have been doing, that I and others have been pushing. the, the electric car, electric car stuff, something that the local air resources have been doing, that I and others have been pushing, is for the, the Carl Moyer program and these other grant programs to include electric bikes, so that people can actually get the, get money for those. And so I would just say that to be more inclusive of what you, I think you were saying, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Medina's suggestion, we could be talking not just about the public infrastructure, but how do we actually encourage or incentivize our own residents to make these choices for themselves, right? And actually put more people on electric, get more people in Emeryville on, on bikes and, and making choices that way, because we're making these infrastructure choices with Doyle Street and the Greenway and the bridge and all these good things. There's a lot, a lot to come. And I think this narrow focus really helps us elevate that message. So I'm supportive of the concept.
Yeah, so we, we're, I think what we're talking about is just being more expansive in our definition of electrification. And making sure that we're, where those opportunities arise, we are ready for them. And I'm sure staff can hear us. And that we are interested in mini grants for electric bikes, if they still exist. If we, if we can make that exist, maybe we'll be the first. Are there any other comments or questions about our priorities? And I appreciate everyone holding back and keeping this nice and tight and slim and focused for staff, because this is, this is the year where we just need to kind of drill down and keep doing what we're doing. And it looks like everyone is satisfied with what we've got with the addition of electrification of mobility devices and fleets and infrastructure that supports those, and seeking the funding for such projects. I'm sure staff will come up with a much shorter way to say that.
We got it. Thank you. And thank you for your patience tonight. Sorry, we went a little over time.
Now, that's, that is entirely not your fault. Okay, so that concludes our study sessions. We're going to roll over to our next meeting. This study session is adjourned. You guys will give me a second, I'm just going to open up my agenda. And Sheri, when you are ready, I will call the next meeting to order.
I'm ready, thank you.
Okay, this is the regular city council meeting of the City of Emeryville today. Sorry?
Successor Agency.
Successor Agency.
Oh, I, I apologize, I pulled up the wrong agenda. Give me one second. Okay. It is 7:42 and I am calling to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. It is still Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. And, uh, Madam City Clerk, may I presume we're all still here? Would you like to call the roll again?
I'll do a quick roll call since it's been a while since we did it. Councilmember Bowders?
Still here.
Councilmember Medina?
Hanging out here.
Councilmember Pats?
Quietly hanging out.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
I am here. And Sheri, while we're at it, do you need me to read the introductory remarks again, or should I save that for the regular meeting?
I would save that for the regular.
Okay, very good. So next up is approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion in a second?
Move the approval of the final agenda.
Back up.
I have a motion by member Bowders and a second by member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Next up is ex parte communications. Does anyone have any communications to report? Seeing none, we are on to public comments for consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to the items on the agenda or not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
I have no online comments, but I see one raised hand.
Right, we will go ahead. Yes, so you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. So hopefully everyone can hear me?
Yes.
So I'm Christine Noem, I'm a partner at the firm Wendell Rosen in Oakland, California. And I am appearing here on behalf of, of my client, Mrs. Catherine Lennon Lozick, as well as Squachlock Company and Whitney Research and Tool. As the council members may know already, I'm sure, we are currently in litigation with the city, with the successor agency, which has filed a claim against my clients for environmental contamination. And I did submit via email our written comments that city council members should have received, as well as the clerk. And I'm not going to go through the entire letter, because you have it in front of me, but basically, just to preface this, our objection is primarily based upon our concern that what the city council and what the successor agency does with respect to the two resolutions that are on the agenda may adversely impact the litigation or may be prejudicial in terms of your findings. So specifically, the resolutions that we are objecting to is the payment to EKI of some $2 million plus, as well as the ROPS agenda item. And the basis for our objections are primarily twofold. It's not exclusive. We have other issues that were not raised, that will be raised, obviously, in the litigation. But one of the first things that we're extremely concerned about is the argument that the agency is making that because there is contamination at Site B, there is an enforceable obligation as to the corporation yard. Our environmental consultants, as well as previous environmental consultants, have submitted comments to the Department of Toxic Substances Control, setting forth the scientific basis for which our claim and our argument is that the groundwater contamination is not migrating from the corporation yard to Site B. Basically, the technical arguments are quite simple. One, the groundwater flow does not flow to the northwest. The groundwater flow in the area flows primarily to the southwest. And so we are, the corporation yard is south of the Site B area, so therefore, we don't believe that it's causing the migration, number one. Number two, we also have a concern that even if there could be migration from the corporation yard to Site B, that migration was either caused by or significantly exacerbated by, by EKI.
That's your time.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Noem, for your comments. I don't see any other hands raised.
And no cards have come in.
And no cards have come in. Thank you. This will close public comment. So that moves us to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion, or does anyone wish to discuss anything?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Hold on a second.
I have a motion from member Bowders, a second from member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That passes unanimously. We have no action items, so this meeting is adjourned at 7:48. And Sheri, when you're ready, I will call the regular meeting to order.
One moment, please. Okay, and we're ready to go.
Very good. It is still 7:48 PM, and I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Give me a moment to read these introductory remarks. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference, pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to the, our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on council agendas and videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as e-notification on social media. And do we need to call the roll again?
Uh, no, we're okay on that.
All right. So next up, we have approval of the final agenda. May I call for a motion?
I move, we approve.
Hold on a second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Donahue, a second from member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. There are no special orders of the day. And, Madam City Clerk, are there any announcements of commission or committee vacancies?
Just to say that we recently did a recruitment to fill unexpected vacancies, and you will be looking at making those appointments, I believe it's on February 2nd. In the meantime, we've had a couple of more vacancies. So we're going to, we're going to go ahead and appoint for the people who did already apply, but we're going to keep the recruitment open and add some positions. That's all for tonight.
Very good, thank you. Do any council members have special announcements or reports on meetings attended? Uh, member Pats?
Yeah, I just attended the monthly HACA meeting, the Housing Authority of Alameda County. Nothing much to report on. They're dealing with budgets in much the same way we are, although it's federal funds, so it's a little bit different. They won't know until after the fact, but just that's my only update.
Very good. Does anyone else have an update that they'd like to give? I would just like to let folks know that if they visit the Alameda County webpage, it's actually, the, the URL is There is some information on COVID-19, including a little form that you can fill in and you can give it your information and purportedly, they will contact you when it is your turn to get vaccinated. I've had feedbacks from a lot of folks in the community, mostly seniors, who are very concerned about not knowing or having any information on when and where they can get vaccinated. And from my research, this is the best way to find out. So I just wanted to share that with folks. If there are no other announcements, I am going to move on. Madam City Manager, do you have a report this evening?
Madam Mayor, I have an announcement. It's a little bit of a bittersweet one. Brad Helfenberger, our dear Brad, voice of Emeryville, has accepted a position with the City of Antioch as their Director of Parks and Recreation. And we are so pleased for him to have this promotional opportunity. But it's just so sad for him to be leaving our community. As you know, he's, he's just a terrific member of our team. A can-do guy with an incredibly positive infectious attitude. He's got that recreator spirit. And we'll be sad to see him go. His last day will be the 29th of this month. We're grateful for his 10 years of service to the City of Emeryville and just wish him all the best with the City of Antioch.
Well, we're all going to miss Brad very much, so thank you for that bittersweet announcement. Are there any ex parte communications that anyone has to report for this evening? Nope. Some confusion as to who they might have talked to. That brings us to the public comments part of our evening. So now's the time for public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to the items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
No online comment cards at this time, and I don't see any raised hands.
Very good. Neither do I. Seeing no additional electronic submittals, a public comment portion of this meeting is now closed. And since there are no audio comments, public comment is now closed. So that will take us to our consent items. Does anyone want to discuss anything, or do I have a motion?
I'll move consent.
And I'll second it. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that brings us, we have no public hearing, so that brings us to item 12. So this is a report to the City Council of the City of Emeryville recommendations made by the Bike-Ped Advisory Committee for Council Consideration. And Mary Grace and/or Nancy, are you gonna be giving us this presentation?
Yes, I am. This is Nancy. Nancy, hi, everybody. And I have some slides. So you should have, you have in your packet a table that shows the motions since the last report from the BPAC. And there are three in there from July, which inadvertently were left off the last report. So we're catching up on those and doing the, the other ones. I have a slide for each one to make them easier to read. So if, if there are, if there are items on this list that you would like to dive into further, I can put that up for, you know, for clarity. How would you like to proceed? You want me to go through the motions, or?
You know, before you do any of that, I would love to ask my colleague, member Medina, and I apologize for not checking in with you before the meeting, but last time we had this report, you had a very handy guide of recommendations. So I wanted to check in with you.
I do have a recommendation. It's going to be a little bit more of a hammer than a scalpel this time.
Would, would you, would it be helpful for you to see each of Nancy's slides, or do you want to just get right into it?
I could get into them, maybe we want to take public comment first.
Sheri, has anyone submitted electronic public comment on this item? And I will check for raised hands.
No electric comments, no. Electronic, rather.
All right, take it away, member Medina.
All right. So first of all, I want to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work that BPAC puts into these. As you can see, a lot of these are from the walking tour, which occurred nearly a year ago. And they just have so much robust discussion around all the things they see around town during these walking tours, which are great. And I highly recommend you join one when we figure out what we're doing for this year. Last time, we recommended a lot of these to the committee, and we recommended a lot of these to the APP plan. And that did increase the scope and budget allocation of that plan. And I think at this point, since we've already kind of done that, what would be appropriate is to appreciate the hard work that BPAC has put on into this. And with a couple of exceptions here, in the spirit of our widowed budget and our narrowly focused CIP, thanks to BPAC for their time, and when items come up in the CIP that these might be associated with, ask staff to then remind us that BPAC had a comment on it, either at committee or at the council level, so that we can take this as they come with projects we're working on. And a great example of that is what happened to Village Greens. They had a fantastic request about shutting down the project, the part of the street in between those two blocks. It tied in with my CIP proposal for Village Greens, which then tied in with our slow streets during COVID. So we were able to take their recommendation and put it as part of the paving plan with no extra, with, you know, extra funding we got. But instead of making it a whole separate item. So I suggest that that is how we approach these recommendations. With a couple of exceptions. One, the very final one about changing the schedule, I think we just did, is part of the consent calendar. as part of the consent calendar, unless I'm wrong. We did that, and I'll tell them. And then for speed limits, I would like there to be referred to transportation because I do believe that staff has been working on items around speed limits and can update us there.
Very good. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
I would just add that the Alameda County Transportation Commission is also looking at supporting legislation around speed limits. So I think the Transportation Committee would be the right place to send that.
Yeah, and I will commit to then leveraging back to BPAC our discussions there and speak with Councilmembers Bouters and those updates from ACCC.
Very good. Well, I'm in full support of your approach, Member Medina. I want to thank you for your service on this committee. I know it is one of our most active and robust committees in terms of how many hours in and out of the meetings that all of the members really spend on all of these safety priorities, which are very much in line with our priorities as a city. So thank you for your service. I thank all of the members of the BPAC for their service as well. And I think this is, I appreciate and I agree with your approach. And I will take it that my colleagues do as well. Member Donahue?
I have a question for Member Medina. The BPAC can be a very passionate place about safety. Are there things that, by taking your approach, that were going to cause outrage by majority of the committee for any one of these items?
Not for any one of these items. That can be accomplished for less than a significant amount of staff time and millions of dollars.
Okay, that's a good answer.
Like, just to be completely honest, I, listen, if I had a magic wand, I would do everything they want, right? I totally would. We just are at this limited capacity. And I did, I guess this is fair context, I spent an hour going over with BPAC our budgetary production and our upcoming CIP. And I'll send them the update from tonight. So they do have a solid understanding of where we're at as a city.
Member Pats?
Can I have a motion to get Member Medina a magic wand? Staff, can you work on that?
There are lots of sticks in Tuscaloosa Creek Park that are loose, especially after the windy night last night. So she can select a wand from a wide array.
Those sticks have to be used to build the outhouse.
Yeah.
And Diane?
That is more polite than the joke I was going to make.
The wand picks the council member. The council member doesn't pick the wand.
You're right, right. Go to the park and then your wand will find you. Okay, so this was, thank you for your succinct response to the presentation, Member Medina. And that gives, allows us to move on to the big event of the night, which is item 12.2. This is the resolution of the renaming of 47th Street between San Pablo Avenue and Doyle Street to Steve Dane Drive. Do we have a presentation from staff on this item?
I believe our public works director, Mary Grace Houlihan, has a short overview.
Yes. Am I, am I on?
Yes.
Your audio is on, yes.
Sorry. And my apologies, I don't have slides for you on this tonight, but I can give you a brief overview of, of what we have done and the process to move forward to complete this action. The staff has identified that there are two addresses on this segment, and it is the AC Transit and the Emeryville Unified School District. And both have been contacted regarding the proposal to change the name of the street. We have also done the research to determine what the steps would be to complete this and contacted the post office to understand how they would handle the dual name or the street name change to ensure that that mail delivery would not be interrupted during this process. So our recommendation tonight is to that, that to move forward with officially noticing those on the streets with official letters and to rename this segmented street with dual named street signs as 47th Street and Steve Dane Drive for a period of two years. And that is for the purpose of allowing for wayfinding to make it easier for folks. The post office will deliver for a minimum of 18 months to both addresses on 47th Street and Steve Dane Drive. And this would then officially complete this naming process. So we are happy to answer any questions regarding this item and take any direction you may have for us.
Thank you, Mary Grace. With council's indulgence, I'm actually going to ask our city clerk if there have been any comments that have been submitted on this item. And if you're attending via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to speak or press star nine if you're calling in on the telephone. So Madam City Clerk, has anyone submitted comments on this?
No, I have no online comment cards.
Okay, seeing no additional submittals, public comment is closed. And we'll bring it back for questions and discussion. But I want to give the floor to Member Pats, who brought this item forward for city council's consideration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. I will start with my typical irreverence for life in general. The, it's a nice transition, me making a, quoting a turf and then us moving to this item. So I think that's just a point in my favor there. I, and now I'm going to move to the more serious part. I think this has been a long time coming. I'm still saddened that we are naming the street, but the school district has yet to take action on this. It is really their wrong to write. But I also want to take a moment and celebrate. You know, we're about to hit an amazing transition in this country in less than, was it 13 hours now? We'll go back to being run by adults and just speaks volumes where we've come in the five years that I've been talking about the renaming of the street that President-elect, I'm looking forward to dropping the elect, Biden has appointed Dr. Rachel Levine to be the Assistant Health Secretary. It's just an incredible, that a person can be out, be who they, and live who they are and attain that level of importance. And, you know, I think we've seen in the last four years how important even under secretaries and assistant secretaries at critical roles such as the Health Department play. So I just, I, you know, this isn't about us, it's about the people who've come before us. And to see even a new trailblazer like Dr. Levine just makes me hopeful. You know, I've spent the last four years talking about the generation below me just being incredible. And I'm still not over the fact that we need to pick somebody who's significantly older than I am to be our next president. But I think we all wanted a grown-up. I think we could have found a 50-year-old grown-up, but that's just me. Sorry, I've lost my train of thought. It's been a difficult week. So I'm going to just say, thank you guys for this. I'm assuming this is going to pass unanimously. It's been a long time coming. And with that, I would like to move approval and then let others.
Senator, anyone else like to make comments? Member Bouters?
I just want to thank Member Pats for sticking to this and sticking it to some people indirectly, I suppose, too, in the process. But mostly for sticking to this. You know, it's, it's hard to be a minority. And Member Pats understood that as a member of the school board in a different way than I understand that as a LGBT man in a different way that Steve Dane understood it as a teacher in 1976, who happened to be transgender at Emory Unified School District. But in all of those examples, it takes a lot of courage and perseverance to overcome people who don't understand or appreciate you or who don't give you the same human dignity and respect that you deserve, whether you're different because you were born that way or you're different because your views are different. We are all worthy of being treated as human beings, I think. And so I just want to thank you for sticking it out and for the partnership you and I have had talking about ways to address this and being an ally to the LGBTQ community. And I just want to thank my colleagues because I agree with Member Pats. I don't think anybody will vote no on this item tonight. But I think it's, you know, we have a whole six people in the attendance and they're all staff at this point. And I, it's because we have those technocratic meetings that are so boring compared to the, the shows that you get in Oakland and Berkeley, as I've heard. But I, I just want to say, like, it's just great that a city like ours is just doing this and it's not a big deal and there isn't a turnout of people to question or object to it because it isn't, it isn't a big deal in the way that most people, and now we're down to five. And there isn't a big deal to people, I can get rid of all five of them if you let me keep talking. But, you know, the, the bottom line is, we, we, we are delivering something that is a reflection of our community values. And I think, you know, as, as small as that recognition may seem and as under, underperforming as I think Member Pats sometimes, he sometimes diminishes this accomplishment. He, he points to the fact that there should be other people involved in making this right. And while I agree with him, I don't think we should turn our, our back on the fact that we did something right by somebody who was wronged. And, and that's a place in history where we stand on the right side of things. So thank you for doing this, Member Pats.
Okay, absent any other comments?
I'll make a second to Member Pats' motion.
Thank you. And I'll just add my comments, thanking Member Bouters and Member Pats as the ad hoc committee who brought this forward for our consideration at city council. And I, I absolutely want to recognize that Member Pats has been fighting this battle for longer than he's been on council. And I just want to remark that I'm so pleased that this is not a controversial item amongst me and my peers. In the year 2021, this feels completely natural and good and, and a long time coming. So Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Member Pats and a second by Member Bouters. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. And I'm glad that wasn't a surprise to any of us. And let's see, I will pause and see if we've got anything, any department head reports for item 13?
I have none this evening, Mayor.
None this evening. Okay, future agenda item requests from council members. In the spirit of keeping it, oh, Member Medina?
Yes, I was wondering when we are going to, sorry, let me scroll down real quick and check first. Yes, I was wondering which council meeting we'll be hearing a review of our cannabis permit at?
February 2nd?
Yeah.
February 2nd. Okay, yes, I see it there now. Sorry. It's hard with all the screens on at once.
Yes. It is. And does anyone have anything to request or any clarification on future agenda items? Okay, hearing none. It is 8:12 PM and I am adjourning this meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, bye, bye. Good night.
Good night.